Hi everyone, Pastor Galen, Lead Pastor at Cheyenne Hills Church. Thank you so much for joining us on this podcast. We hope that these podcasts will be a real encouragement to you on your spiritual journey. You can also connect with Cheyenne Hills at cheyennehills.org. Hope you enjoy the program. Well, hello everybody and welcome to the podcast. We are live again with Nathan Winters and Kristi Clausen and Brooke Humphrey. Guys, thank you so much for joining us. We are just trying to get the issues and ideas out there. What do you believe, what you think as you are running and for the, for school board? And Kristi, this is your, how many terms have you served? What's your, your timeframe on the board?
I've been on for four years, which is one term.
One term. And so you're, you're, you're running again. And then Brooke, this will be the first time that you're running for school board.
Correct.
I'll just start with you. What is, what is your why? Why did you get involved with this whole idea of running for school board?
Yeah, that's a really loaded question that I could probably go in for hours to answer. But as in a gist, I feel called and just feel like the Lord is seem like, because I identify, I guess you could say myself is like, oh, what do you do? Well, I'm a stay at home mom. And I've just been convicted over the years that being a stay at home mom is so much more than just taking care of your kids. And part of what I feel like I'm being called to, thrown into is to make a difference, not just for my kids, but for the kids in our community. And so my why, why are you running? I'm running for my kids, running for your kids, our kids, all of the kids. And a huge, kind of to piggyback off of that, a lot of what our kids are exposed to are through the teachers. And there are so, so many teachers in our district that feel underappreciated, maybe not seen, like they're not being taken care of. And that is really discouraging to me because my teachers that I had in this district played a huge role in my life and were very influential for me to have, especially in that just really hard seasons. And so I'm, I'm also running for the teachers to have a voice as well.
Speaking of that, you, you grew up in Cheyenne, right?
I did, yeah, for the most part.
Elementary school?
Not elementary. I lived in Fort Collins for elementary school, but then came back junior high and high school here.
That's just next door.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
So Kristi, you know, one of the things I, I ask you, and I think, I think my concern for all those that are, that are running for school board, this is a, this is an adult dose of humanity, you know, to, to bring in ideas coming together, right? And I always in this program, I will today, to be strong and very courageous. What kind of courage does it take to, to, to keep your values and state your values in, in this context?
Wow, that is a great question. I feel like serving on the school board has caused me to have to deep, dive deep to, lean on courage and to be strong and to be willing to speak up. And, you know, I've been on the board for four years. In the first two years, I was usually walking alone on my positions. And it can be very intimidating at times to be the only one. And thankfully, two years ago, there was someone else who joined the board that's been, that's been a conservative and, and sort of viewed the different issues we deal with the same way I do.
Well, you know, we were, we had an interview the other day and Hank Bailey basically said the same thing. He'd served 10 years, right?
I believe so.
Or it's been 10 years since he's served.
No, I believe he was on for 10 years.
Yeah, and it's been about 10. He said 2014 is when he was last.
And he stepped out.
And so now he's stepping back on the board. But he mentioned the same thing. He said, when he was on the serving, there was like one or two that had the same kind of view of, of life that is, he said, he said, having a, you know, a majority or having that, that group that has a kindred spirit, he said, that's, it's worth more than I think we, we could even imagine. It's kind of what you're, what you're affirming. I've seen that. So, so Nathan, I, I quoted you once and I always, always walk tenderly on this because I may mess this up. But you said that one time or something like this, you can clean this up.
You were walking tenderly because you quoted me?
No, I was walking tenderly because I want to do it perfectly. And I was afraid I didn't get it right. But the, the whole idea is that the, what the most important election is the one closest to you, something like that.
Exactly right.
Right? And I, I think, I don't know, you've asked, got some questions that I know here, but this is an important, it's important for people to know, this is the, probably the closest election that has most impact on the hearts and minds of our kids.
Right.
And so I, again, thank you ladies for being here. And Nathan, I know that you always have some good questions here.
No, I really appreciate that lead in because there's an old understanding of this, an old teaching that goes back centuries and is called the understanding, the doctrine of subsidiarity, that the, the relationships that you have closest to you are most important. And so it matters that you involve yourself in the local city, the local community. And for years, years and years, I have been saying this, that most people need to invert their understanding of government. Most people can tell you everything about the president, but they can't tell you about the, the different positions that affect their lives the most. And for years I've said, if you have a child under the age of 18, or you have a grandchild, the most important decision you could make is your local school board.
Right.
And start inverting your view of government. It does matter that you care about the president, but it matters far more that you care about things that are closest to you.
Okay, so Kristi, you mentioned, you were just starting to mention this before we went on the air and I'll let you finish your story, but you've actually served on some, some higher, I mean, national boards, is that right? Or something like, along those lines?
Well, yeah, I worked, I worked in Washington DC for 15 years. And I worked in government affairs and I rubbed elbows with our national leaders, people that we would all recognize on international human rights issues. And so I'm very familiar with that arena, but boy, when I ran as a mom here in Cheyenne, cared about our school district and the decisions we were making, I had no idea how much more important that work was going to be than any of the work I had prior in Washington DC.
And probably as you found out, as equally as, as passionate, I would imagine, right? Because we're, you're, there's, there's issues in our, in our day that are just people, I mean, good people on both sides have different views of this and it's, it's difficult. These are difficult decisions, different, difficult topics to jump into.
Well, part of the issues are ones that actually come to us not from New Jersey or California or New York. These are ones from Wyoming. And so I'd like to ask you a couple of questions based on things that are happening here. In Sweetwater County, recently, the school board, I just, I wrote a couple of notes down. Local parents were told that the school district had every right to withhold information from parents regarding how their children presented themselves at school. And that of course creates a scenario where parents would be informed whether their children would have an ibuprofen or not, but not how that child was portraying themselves at school or if they had changed their name at school. And so the school had chosen to bypass the parents and parental rights and even the basic understanding of the family and said, no, no, you just trust us. And so when, when it comes to that school board position, of course, this is huge. What are your thoughts on the role of a school board and specifically the school board's relationship to parents? May I start that with you and then, and then we'll come over? Yeah.
Sure.
Kristi?
I have very strong opinions about this. I feel like you can't divorce the child from the family. I'm a mom and boy, I'd be hopping mad if, if the school district ever kept something like that, kept anything from me. And I think most of my friends who are moms would agree. We, we are not in the position of superseding the family's role, their values, their inputs, their knowledge of what's going on with their students. And we should never be. So I feel very strongly about that one.
That's great. Yeah, how about you, Brooke?
Yeah, just to piggyback off what Kristi said, I completely agree that the, the school, it is not a place for the school to, like she said, divorce the family. I believe that as a public school system, we should be encouraging the relationship between parent and child and encouraging, supporting, and like the foster care system, the goal is to get the kid back to the parent. The goal should always be transparency with our kids as well, making sure that our parents are more than aware of all that's going on with the kids. Like you said, you have to get permission to, what's the word, distribute medicine at school. Why would something like this be kept from the parents?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Actually, that leans right into the next question. When we talk about the client in education, when we look at the position that you're running for, you're having to run for that position. You're therefore being elected by the public at large for a particular position. So the question comes, why do you think this is an elected position? Who then are you representing as an elected member to a school board from the local community? It comes down to the question of who is the client in education? Brooke, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would believe that the client is the parent because the parent has the one to choose if they're going to go to private school or if they're going to homeschool. And so ultimately the client is the parent because the parent's choosing to put their kid in public school. Yes, the, the student is our greatest stakeholder and all that we do is for and impacts the student, but ultimately the parent chooses for their kid to go into public school.
Excellent, yeah. What do you think, Kristi?
I, I would say the same thing. I think we're going to probably agree a lot. You know, again, it goes back to that, that answer I just gave, that you can't divorce the child from the parent. The client is that family and every single family. And I know we have diversity in our community and different families, but we always need to strive for transparency. And the board, we are elected to be that voice of our community and our families and our parents that come and raise issues of concern. We're supposed to listen and that is something I've always strived to do.
That's good.
I, I interviewed a, a person on the school board one time and, and just asked this question because I've, I've asked, I've actually asked this of Nathan. I said, why do we, we elect somebody and they go up to Washington and they have, it seems like they don't have the same views that they, you know, what happens? And because he's in that world and he's been an elected official and what's the pressures? And maybe I just don't understand everything around it. But the question I, that I asked, I said, this person was basically saying, this is, this is their values. And I said, I align with those values perfectly. So it doesn't, do you bring those values to that, that board that, that person was serving on? And she goes, well, I, I have values here, but I also represent a broader, you know, which is true. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of religious, very diverse in the school board. And so I don't know if you, I know the exact answer to this, but I'm curious of your thoughts on it. How does your values, your personal values affect the whole? Should they be completely separate or should they, should they be one and the same?
I think that you can't escape your values if they're truly convictions. And so they're going to permeate through your decisions and even how you look at the different issues that come up. You know, I would say that probably over 95% of the issues that the school board deals with don't really get into personal values. But boy, that small percentage that does, your, your personal convictions, if you have conservative or liberal leanings or faith-based leanings, they will come out in those conversations. And you, you really need to vote on those convictions because certainly, and, and that's why today is good, people need to know who they're voting for. And those decisions are inevitable and you need to have the people on the board that have those convictions that you share that will speak up.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much more I can add to what Kristi said because I agree with her as well, but I think a, a big thing that honestly really frustrates me is how much politics is involved in our school system. I think like, like you said, I'm, I'm not going to waver from my convictions just because so and so's mom might not agree. But that being said, the, the public school just shouldn't be a place for either. I think that you can, you can want what's best for our students, want what's best for our teachers and our district as a whole, without really pushing any kind of agenda and just focusing on, let's make sure our kids are educated and that they're safe and that they're taken care of. So along the lines of, of, like you said, it takes courage to stand up for what you believe. And I think there's a way to do that, that's going to protect our community for, for what Cheyenne stands for. Like we just like, like getting like-minded people on the board, voting for who you share values with, doesn't mean that we're going to be infiltrating the school system and doing all kinds of weird things that I, I just, I've heard stories and I'm just like, let's teach our kids, let's make sure our kids are safe and that they are protected as a whole.
That's very good. It's very interesting you bring that up. I think it's a great segue. I've been reading a book, getting ready for a couple of talks I'll be giving in North Carolina in a couple of weeks. But one of them, Dr. Joel Spring brings this up in the American Education from 1647 to today. And he begins to show tipping points as they begin to push more and more political ideas into what originally was never seen as a political, a, a place for political force at all. And so I appreciate your willingness to stand up in different ways. There was a school district, this is just in the last few months in Goshen County, that was told by their lawyer. So by the way, let me just point this out, there are a number of really good lawyers that I know, you're married to a lawyer. So I think lawyers, you can have good lawyers. But, but you'll find lawyers that will push an agenda oftentimes. And this is what's hap, what happened in Sweetwater County and also what happened in Goshen County. They were told that unless they adopted the proposed, now that's a very crucial word, the proposed rules on Title IX from the Biden administration, that they would lose their school lunch money. Now, one of the things that you see in that, first of all, it was a proposed rule. But secondly, they actually tried to drive that through the agenda without properly notifying parents. Now, parents found out about it and wound up showing up in force. But when you look at the ability to push back, sometimes you have to push back against the people that claim to be the experts. And let me just ask this question of you. Do you have the, you know, it takes, it takes the kind of courage we're talking about to push back against experts? And so that would be question number one. And number two, this is kind of a tie-on, it's a slightly different question, but I think it's something to give you, something to sink your teeth into in the next answer. And it's this, recently, Laramie County School District Number One joined with other school boards to, or other, other school districts to sue the state of Wyoming for more funding. And so this would be then, I believe, the fifth court case since 1980. So we have the Waschiky decision and then Campbell's one, two, and three currently that kind of dictates our, our funding model. Well, now there's an all new lawsuit and in many national polls or statistics, Wyoming is ranked in the top 10 in funding in the nation. And, and we're number one in the nation as far as funding in all categories. And yet recently we joined a lawsuit. What are your thoughts on whether we should be joining in that lawsuit? What the role of that is? What are your thoughts as a school board member? Because you would be the person responsible for that decision. I'd like to pose it to you first, Kristi, then we could come to Brooke.
All right. Well, thank you. That's kind of a long question. So if I forget.
Unpack that whole thing.
I think I've got it. There's two questions here. Well, first off, I, I can go right to an example where I had to stand up and fight hard. And it, it happened actually in January of this, this year. We had been told in the fall, last fall, as a board, I should be clear, our board was told that we had to send our students home because of the quarantining policy in place and that we had to follow the CDC's guidelines in the quarantining policy. So within three weeks of schools starting last fall and we were unmasked, we had over a thousand of our students at home quarantined and most of them healthy. Our nurses were exhausted, they were being chewed out by parents because they objected to their student being quarantined for 10 days. They were threatening to quit. You know, there was all kinds of things, at least I, that's what I heard. And so we took a very hard vote and the hospital was full. We had the CEO come and tell us, well, we found out later, they were doing construction. I mean, there was, there was a lot of information that was presented. And as you know, sometimes information can be presented in a way to make you draw a conclusion that isn't necessarily correct. And that's exactly how I feel that happened. And so the state health officer within like a month or so later clarified their position that we actually weren't under no requirement to follow CDC's guidelines on quarantining.
I did not know this.
Yeah.
Because all I heard was this, the result of the vote. And I'd heard some vitriol as well. Sometimes it's good to know the, the backstory. What you're presented with.
There's always a backstory.
That's true. I know that's true. So that's good.
So, you know, here I was, someone who was opposed to masks, who reluctantly thought, well, I want to keep our kids in school, so that's my number one priority.
Oh, they told you that if you want to keep them in school, they got to have masks. They told that had to be.
Well, the implication was that we had so many quarantine, including teachers, that we wouldn't be able to go on for very much longer.
Gotcha.
Open. And so the minute the state health officer clarified her position, I immediately stood up and started to fight. And I did ask for a work session because that's how we proceed on changing our policies. And I got a work session three months later, three months later. And when I got to the work session, which is meant for our board members to get together, it's a public meeting because we have to have public meetings when we meet. But it was meant for us to talk and discuss the issue and debate and hopefully come to a conclusion. When I walked in, there sat the state health officer, the county health officer, the county health executive director, the CEO of the hospital and some other folks. And I found myself standing and making my case with them rebutting everything I said. I still forced the issue and thankfully, I think logic prevailed, the argument won the day. And then, you know, we were able to as a board, get four people to vote to remove those masks.
Is that right?
And you know what? Our cases in our, in our district went down. They did not go up.
That's extraordinary.
So that's part one of your question.
I did ask a very long question, but that's a really good answer.
I did know all that backstory.
Good to have that backstory.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Well, and it, it proves exactly what we're saying. This whole idea of just really how much courage it takes to stand on, on your principles and you, you did. And that's, but sometimes not very popular too.
Oh, it was very difficult because I'm not a doctor.
Yeah, sure.
But I did, I did read several studies. I did talk to other friends who are doctors. But you know, when, when you have authorities telling you one way, it does take quite a bit of moxie to stand up and say, I disagree. Do you want me to try to?
You know what? I could reframe the next question if you want.
I've got it. I've got it.
Okay.
I'll just, and then I'll give her the floor. But on this question of the district suing the state.
Yes.
I do think we have buildings in our, in our district that are very old and that are long overdue for either replacement or, you know, renovation. And of course, we want to support our staff, our employees. They're the heart line, lifeline, I should say, to our district. But you do make a good point, Nathan, about how we compare to other states around, around us. What I've always said and encouraged our superintendent to do is to talk to our delegation. We have elected officials from Laramie County and we need to build those relationships and they need to do the hard work of figuring out what to do. I'm not in favor of suing. However, I have had to take a vote of, or recuse myself from the vote because I have a conflict of interest. My husband is actually defending the state. So that might give you a little bit of an idea of where I stand on that.
I see. I got you. Okay.
So part, part one of part two, a lot of, I've, I've had similar questions to us being young, not having as much life experience or career experience, people, I think automatically just go to, oh, I don't know, can she do it? And, and I've asked myself that question. My husband's posed that question, like, are you going to be like, are you able to be bold enough? And quite frankly, no. Like me alone, absolutely not. But that's where the discernment and the strength from the Holy Spirit comes in where it's not just on me. It's not on my strength that I'm going to be able to be strong. It's not on me to be able to decide, well, I don't know, like, are these officials kind of just pushing an agenda? Are they, are they not? That's where I'm relying on my relationship with the Lord and the discernment that I'm going to have from the Holy Spirit and saying, he gave me the, the push and the nudge to runs, I'm going to trust that he is going to give me the wisdom and discernment that I need while being on the board to just make a common ground, common sense decision, like bringing logic back to the board. That's my answer on that.
That's good.
Part B, I'm not as educated, I guess I should say, about the lawsuit. But I think, I, like Kristi said, I agree that there are buildings in our district that need attention, whether it's renovations or replacement. I believe there are other ways that we can go about doing that. Something that I think is just ridiculous is how hard it is to get our buildings on, up on the list of replacement. I think we need to take a look at what that process is. So for example, if a school has a leaking roof, like in order to abide by insurance and to keep that building insured, they have to fix that leak. Well, fixing that leak push puts them down further on the list. So I think there are other things we can look at, other delegations that we can be, like you said, getting better relationship, better relationships with our legislative and being more informed on our processes, our policies and where the money is going right now and how we can be better suiting our district.
I, I appreciate that perspective on the school buildings side of things. I've been on the opposite side of that debate in the legislature. I remember having to fight very hard for two different schools in my part of the world. One of them had been built in the early 19 teens and it was still being used at eight different levels. If, if you had a child that was in a wheelchair, you literally had to wheel them outside in the snow and wheel them around the building to get to another location in the building. And so those kind of things do happen. And part of it is we have building needs across the state of Wyoming and limited funds to get it done, especially as we've watched the hit on the energy industry. Well, I guess what I'd like to ask about a little bit more though, is we care about our teachers and we have great teachers. I get phone calls from them all the time in a different capacity that, that I have. And, and I'm really convinced we have a lot of good teachers. Now, that doesn't mean that all teachers are perfect, but there are some good ones. And so one of the things though, that I find is that oftentimes the, the money doesn't flow necessarily to the classroom, the way it should. Oftentimes it's supporting a massive superstructure. So when it comes to talking about the functionings of school and streamlining the way things get done and trying to help alleviate some of the pressures on the teacher in the classroom and actually let them teach, what are your thoughts on, on actually helping teachers in the classroom? Well, we could start with you, Brooke, and then go to Kristi, Brooke?
This is actually something I'm really passionate about. So great question. Our, like you said, our teachers are, they're having to worry about getting money for their libraries in their classroom or making sure that their classroom has furniture to hold those books. Or maybe they want a rug and they have to fundraise or ask for donations for all those things. I think that is ridiculous. Our teachers in the public school system are not, their, their focus should not be on, well, my, my classroom's not ready for the school year, I need to get X, Y, and Z. No, that should be on the district to provide that for the teachers so that they can then just come to work, focus on our kids and not having to stress about, well, so and so's classroom has this, I really want that, I can't afford that. It shouldn't be on the teacher to afford things for their classroom. I think that our, our money needs to stay closest to the students and that's in our classrooms. And equipping our teachers as a district to be able to focus on the kids will ultimately give our students a better education.
That's good. Yeah, Kristi?
That's a great, great answer, Brooke. I agree. I, I really want the money to be as close as we can to the student and that includes our teachers. They're fantastic professionals who are there to do a job of teaching and they do so much more than that. They're spread thin. They end up being parents sometimes, they end up being social workers sometimes. They're, they're looking out for our students in every single way and we need to make sure that we support them. I do think that as a board member, it's our job to be looking for efficiencies. And I would never want to cut from the classroom or the teacher. It's, as you said, there's other, there's other areas that we should be very carefully watching contracts and administrative levels, you know, how many administrators we have in the district and, and making sure that our people are utilized well and spending their time well so that we can keep those dollars in the classroom and oriented toward our students.
That's good. Yeah.
I get, I thought I'd just throw my why, because you know, we're talking about courage and it does take courage. It takes courage on every level. Having, you know, school board and or political people inside of a church is not for the faint of heart, I will tell you. And so I'm not endorsing a candidate, I'm endorsing or letting people to be exposed to ideas and where you guys are at. And so I- And so I'm not endorsing a candidate. I'm endorsing or letting people be exposed to ideas and where you guys are at. And so I appreciate that. But you know, when I talk to uh, Mr. Fraley and I talked to Derek Jackson and some of the others that that I've talked to even on the school board, and I always told him, here's my why. You know, why get behind, from behind the pulpit and get involved in this local election? First of all, I've seen how much this board has influence uh, the, over the hearts and minds of our kids. Whether it's curriculum, whether it's leadership, what it has, has a lot of jurisdiction or potentially has a lot of sway on what happens in those classrooms. So I appreciate your views on on getting this information and the power to the teachers to do their teaching. And the the verse that I used, and I I know it makes people uncomfortable, but it's like, this is, Jesus said, if you cause one of these little ones who love me to stumble, it would be better to have a millstone wrapped around your neck and be cast in the bottom of the sea. I stood in Capernaum, where that's at, and there's this huge millstone. And I'll promise you, it's not a flotation device. The Sea of Galilee is right behind there and I'm gonna tell you it's massive. And so even though Jesus said it in a very calm tone, I'm sure, the the word picture is pretty powerful. And so, so for me, my why of getting involved and trying to expose our our congregation or anybody else who wants to hear is that we, we, I think we need to know our why and that we're hard, we're out there, for me personally, I'm desiring for the hearts and minds of our kids. And I'm hoping that for the courage on this board to protect and and defend what's going in, age-appropriate, we've talked a lot about that. And um, and to to make sure that those things are happening in in our local, in our local school system.
That brings up a great question. There's been a series of articles that we've seen in Wyoming news just recently and the Cowboy State Daily uh, News. I've seen several articles on this. And I was actually pretty thankful because thi- this sounds horrible, but um, it looks like the, that particular newspaper was so concerned that people would think that what they were reporting was didn't matter much, that they uh, they put some graphics in their news articles to show the world what's happening. And this comes out of a story out of Natrona County where two books, I don't know how else to describe them other than pornographic. They literally show um, sexual acts uh, in in graphic novels and they were in the
Cartoon, they're, it's kind of cartoon drawing.
But when I, it's not like light cartoon drawings.
It's, it's very explicit.
It, yeah, it's very explicit, um, and it's very adult-looking and it's very clear. And so they, they, they put little uh, blur-out bubbles and stuff on that. But it was so bad that you could clearly see that if this was sold to an underage child, it would be considered you're, you're giving pornography to underage children.
No doubt.
So what we found was that Natrona County School District Number One was unwilling to pull this pornography out of the, the uh, the school libraries. Now, you may be faced with a decision like that. And so again, I guess it's another way, I I think you've answered this in different ways, who's the client in education? But if you were faced with a decision where someone said, look, there, here is a book in in our school library and it clearly is showing um, um, actual sexual acts and everything else, we feel like this needs to be pulled. What would be your thoughts on on that decision? Christie, what, what, what do you think?
Well, we've actually, in LCSD one, had that issue come up. And um, I was surprised as a board member to find that we had that kind of level of graphic and explicit content of sex acts in our libraries. Uh, they're in our secondary libraries. And um, I'm, as a parent personally, I I feel like it's, that should not be on the shelves. These are minors and that is adult content. I asked for another work session, um, and boy, that was even harder. I mean, I don't know if people were more more upset about the masks or the books. But um, you know, I've been called book banner and I've been called all kinds of names.
Which response to that accusation is a silly accusation, but an accusation of book banning, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, it's not really book banning because we're not help burning these books and and, you know, quite honestly, these are library books. And when you get into high school, I'm told at least that hardly anyone uses the library. But you certainly can get it on your personal device. You can get it from the public le- library. So it's easily accessible in other formats. But the question is, is should LCSD one using public, using taxpayer dollars be um, providing these materials? And um, if you would argue that, yeah, they should be available, then I would say at the very minimum they should be an opt-in where parents have to have control of whether or not their student reads these materials. We should not be um, providing these without a parental consent.
Yeah, yeah. Brooke, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, I liked that answer regarding book banning because what I just heard was it's almost like telling the person that's the gatekeeper at the movies that they're a movie banner if they don't allow underage children into an R-rated movie. Obviously, we would see that that's just silliness. But uh, that, that's essentially the analogy that they're trying to do when they accuse you of being a book banner. What are your thoughts on that, Brooke?
Yeah, I I completely agree with all that Christie said. I believe that as the public school system, we are supposed to be protecting our kids and educating our kids. So my question would be, what about that is educating our kids? And how is that helpful? How is it, um, I feel like it would just be more confusing and damaging to our kids. And again, we're, we're supposed to be protecting them. So that, that would be my answer to that question.
Well, you, both of you ladies have, um, I appreciate you coming in, sharing your hearts. I, it takes courage just to come in and get in front of a a microphone and and just kind of, and off the cuff, share your thoughts. And I appreciate you doing that so much. And because I think this is, this is the one that's closest to us. And I think it's one of those that's really, really important. I think you've given some um, great information so people can make their decisions on what's going on. And so would you, just before we close, real quick? So tell us how this, this is gonna happen. There's, there's a, there's a candidate at large that's gonna be voted on. And then there's three different um, quadrants that are gonna be voted on. And I'd like to know which one, who's representing what quadrant here?
Well, the great thing about that question, because this is the first election in Laramie County history that's going to be like this, one at-large position and three three triads. But the person who probably knows more than anybody in the county is actually with us right now. Christie, uh, what, what, what is the design of this election? And which, which ones are you guys running for?
Okay. Well, they're called areas and they do um, follow the triads pretty closely. They're not perfect because the, the county clerk had to use precincts that were already pre-existing to put in the three areas. So I'm running for Area Three, which is the central triad area.
And I'm running for Area Two, which is the east triad.
East triad. Wonderful.
Well, that's, that's helpful. And I think people need to know because I think there'll be a lot of people on those borderlines. They may not, they may think, oh, I'm gonna be voting on, in one triad. But I think it's important for everybody to know.
But they will be voting for two people.
Right.
One at large and then one for their area.
If they want to, if they think, well, I'm on the border, maybe I need to check, they can go to the county clerk's page and figure out where they live and that will help them.
Know exactly when they go into that voting. That's helpful too. Thank you. Well, guys, thank you again for both of you for being here. Nathan, always, just good to see you. Your smiling face just makes me so happy. So anyway, hey, and we say this all the time. It takes a lot, it takes this for life. It's gonna take this for this school board. But I'm gonna challenge you to be strong and very courageous. God bless you guys.